Share screen?
Nope, nope.
Oh. What do you want to do?
Should be a camera. Yep. PTZ Pro 2.
Say what? Ah.
So if you hit the camera button.
Welcome to our school board meeting tonight. It is 6:30 and this is really loud, so I hope I don't blow you out of here. But if you please join me for the pledge of allegiance, and the flag is right above us. Couple of them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Don't just sit down without.
It's easier going.
Thank you. So agenda adjustments. I would like to propose that we move 5.6 from the presentation by Mr. Bailey to immediately follow this item 1.3, so he can do his presentation, and then let him hit on the road and get back on his way. So I would, these have to be approved, because we do have two members who are zooming in. For everybody's information, Christie and Dory are zoomed in. Vicki notified us that she's not feeling well enough even to zoom in. And Scott is unavailable tonight. He has another commitment. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to move 5.6 to follow 1.3. Moving second and in any discussion? Alright, then we'll take a vote.
Vicki? Oh, is not here. Christie?
Yes.
Dory?
Yes.
Robbie? Diane? Jen? Joe? Bob?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So introduce Mr. Steve Bailey. He's the executive director of the Main School Management Association. We invited him here tonight in order to provide some guidelines in school board. We have some new members. Been awhile since we've had this presentation. And so therefore, we thought it might be beneficial. So at this time, we'll turn it over you.
I don't know how to do.
I'll go ask Jordan. I can't hear him. Very buzzy.
We have Willis, Alice, three years.
Yours on the board, Diane?
No, I've been on the board for
Couple of months.
Couple of months, but for three years.
She's on a three-year term.
So they can't quite hear you, Steve, so I'm not quite sure. They said you sound like you're underwater. Their words, not mine. We got Christie Willett, so maybe you could introduce yourself, Christie?
Sure. Christie Willett. I am from Litchfield, and I've been on the board since July 1 of this year.
Okay, Dory?
Dory Uppham, Litchfield, and my term actually, I would, I'm gonna need to be, have another election this June.
And I'm Bob English. I'm from Wales. According to our county officials, I've been on the board for about 25, one on 26 years. I've been here for a little while.
I think unfortunately, they're picking it up off of the laptop microphone, which
Our purpose tonight is to review or debate that relates to the main set. And I was going to point out to you right after the get-go, but your first responsibility provided by main law through the main statutes, not for municipal law, but for the main law of the legislative union. The other aspect tonight is to have a pretty productive work together, and that will be something that the team, you are the government scene for your school administrative gear. If you wanted officials to be able to think that, there is a team that's where how you work competitive day information for students. But this is also a part of board learning. At this time, same throughout the course of their school board here, giving a major vision to different things that are important to you. The board sometimes has more topics that are important to you to be able to increase your learning and what together with the school. And then most important is, I mean, you're thinking about how you can help try to approach any roles and sources of support who you're mainly body, what led you to body and say, lifeless. And through that, you're ready to get original identified for you through the law of these statutes. We go through those. So if we can get started, we will. One thing I would move before we actually begin to run further, if you're dedicating specifically as board member, what can that brought up as a possible, one, one of the, a thought running within there, look at things in terms of where it is taken of. I'm just going to need, we wanted to make sure we're talking about being a part of the, this type of professional workshop. I think we can go a little bit, anything in terms of, any number of tools?
Nope.
Alright, well, trying to be good at this formalism again, I want to talk to the first three examples. When you give, if you have a question, come up, please.
Anything out from this, Chris?
Dory, we just mentioned here.
Then, as a school, additionally, you can govern the law. Your statute very powerful, coming from the section in the law office, education that has 20 days. In the subject 1, 2, and 21, we have 20 different sub-sections that are your responsibility to make sure you know what you're supposed to be doing. That's where you're according to the same statute. It's on the website, it's on the legislation, it's on the statutes, committed to sort of title 48, it's subject 1, 2, and 21. And set of statutes, whatever you refer to, you don't think there's a one key on the right side of your, your statute. Each two first, yeah. The first one basically is the summary of what you see as statutes there. And essentially, you can find usually opportunities if you know if you have a responsibility for paying, for letting certain policies making a responsible. You're also a responsible for education, progress. You're also responsible for personnel employment, cost staff, although ways to seek competitive, devices that are higher rates set. You also have a process of additional means that are required for you to be active in the department. That may come in the case of students in college or use experience in a student, or perhaps teaching assistance on future leadership. Thank you. That happens happen very often, or when it happens, those situations that are in terms of effective sections, there's a direct fight on a budget matter, but a very serious one, one that keeps people over, and they're experienced. You also have a strong part of responsibility of budgeting finances. Because you need to be able to provide the financial resources that are in your team, and given the kind of information you want to be discussed. Then I need to announce that you're in the foundation to be providing public. You're responsible for media and consultants, making sure that students that have access to data, can be engaged in the kind of division basis situation that you want to achieve. You also need to be able to provide the funding. Now, this is a particular set of statutes, which is kind of organized for you to give your policy, BKA, which is school board products and products. So that's the end of the key that we're talking about. We're going to estimate the data speaks about your responsibility and support and as a board, you need to consider yourself, my record, with broad questions of policy, whether it's in the industry. But that is going to be the interpretation of what you're using, of what people want to see. If you're dealing more with policy practices, you currently have a 48,000 people. And there are a lot of the vaccine gathering, to the people that need this, either people that have been hired through the detail, to work on this. So you're going to be able to help set the stage, and you may go to turn over to the industry, unavailable to every other group. The manager that tells us that, you finish their home, the industry, your home, the industry is responsible for, and making sure people, the way that you want to be at your, your setup. So you would add policy, you select and report the superintendent, you provide for the planning, execution, approval, maintenance, inspection, maintenance of the physical plan. You provide the internal safety, to the additional operations, and the two where the students are. You require the establishment and maintenance of records, conduct, process, mission, record. You develop the budget plan under the board's schedule, and you also efficiently fund the necessary front assets you have ready for a, a school. One of the responsibilities you have to, and sometimes part of this, is delegate two statutes, you do not force effect. Providing statutes and structural links, evaluating educational program, providing facilitation and revision, and also approval of this, which puts in all the limitations of the thing. So those are the things in your policy, that you set forth, that you expect you will for yourself. And the third, this is on the fact of our policies, if they're quite you have a policy in your, it's on the auto adjustment. The central area. And those policies are written in your rules of the law.
I don't know why she's on this.
Very, very combination. Those are what you should be recurring, people, you have a question of if they do this, or how should, how should we be doing this? One of the things you should be doing is going to your policy, and you have a policy, and they're facing it. And guidance in terms of how we should be making those decisions. So in terms of what we just approved, about the policy, it's your, it's your responsibility. So from there, you can go and take other actions, make sure, what you want to add. We'll move on to the next slide. The next slide talks about how to get to where you are. As individuals, you either range for office, or you are elected or appointed, or you gain from a position or being an individual, running for a school board position. You want, you got elected to the board, now all of a sudden, now you're part of the team. You're part of RG4, and so you represent RG4. And we're talking about this, because it speaks to the issue of who you're working. You have an ordinary, open when you're working there for a school. And so the only time you really ever school for is when you're officially called outside of the league. You have four people who, who that, that need, or in excess, you have a thing called, that's right. And so in terms of the way to vote, and also not to turn around much of the board, as well as the urgency, based on who's rather than me.
Jesus Christ, shut up, you fat fuck. No one wants to hear you.
In terms of this, this is taking the slide. Your authority, you know, we have
Stupid.
This is like, really the end of the slide as well. Your authority except for actually a part of the jury. So when the majority of the board shakes and actually makes it, and makes the vote, then all of a sudden, you have to be a decision to do your question, or follow her, that action is. It's possible where the board decides that one person can have authority to do something, but you have a negotiation committee that could be, us the board that have a bigger capacity, or certain others on other committees, or number of, you know, from this board, why they're going to need, right, authority for that. But otherwise, each side of board, each, each action of the board, has to be able to be determined, that is, that is legal, not the ones. This is the part that I don't think talking with the board, you could really talk about, your authority is when you were elected by, as soon as you were elected and you was sworn in, and you became a board member for RG4, you represented RG4. So you represented students of RG4. The key thing with all students, schools, the main areas in terms of being responsible for everything that has RG4. Now, you still got to be speaking to people living in your community. Like the process you take on, and every consideration, or decision, but you're not, should be, how is this going to affect all the students, all the schools? That one. You're RG4. So, we represented, you represented the board, it's a new box. There's that suspense, a little bit of a bit of a situation that I want to select, and where you think about the may take office. Is there a situation in our legislature, might be about, to maybe take office in a restaurant, to say, there it is. Other sort of thing, the people that like to be supported. That's not the thing to report, it's not really in the spotlight, there's a couple leaders, in terms of what we did from school board members, you know, when they elected to school. By state statute, you are representing the environment. There's one thing that we, that's, or you, this is a thing that we're doing. And it's a part of things that we're developing, so pay attention to is the identity there that, and the law, there's a four-facing algorithm. I determine this, and they, their case, this is a case before the spring and court. But it talks about actually people, and I wouldn't compare it to this board, that is in the section as well. The main institution for support of education and delivery of resources. School board that produces a statute with reducing responsibilities to drive the revenue. The next concern of school board is responsibly explore and assist this too, their respect to communities appears to be the same being the decision of the main law player. That the school committee acts as a public board, in no sense represents the power. It's limited, determined by the board as a, after a election, and your public offices derive when they're referring from the law. You're responsible for the state, particularly for that. So, it's my decision, main resolution, that education being the responsibility of the student. Then it's a legitimate statute that provides the government, the school, what school was, or to you, that case in, in the yard. Had a situation where a student didn't, what, say, he made up a bit, to be their responsibility to pay for students' education. And a lot of courts say, oh, yes, indeed, it is your responsibility to pay for that, that student, that case in, sure, coming about a hundred of, of, right now, that applies, you need to ensure that some units are responsible for all the students who have been in their school administrative positions. So again, that's something important, one of us to be, to be paid attention to, things about who you represent. Your constituents are students of RG4. While at the same time, paying attention importantly to those people that are in this next group. Besides, maybe here, seeing a lot of, what it is, they want, you know, for the, their education system, their, their chief. Very quick, that is what I want to, or so many information that relates to one of the, what this is working for, it's one of the supercentities. And this is the thing, this slide, I want to start from the bottom, because the most important thing you should give this board is supercentive work together. Is being able to think about, of everybody collectively, and how that's communication, how that's control trust. We can charter, uh, two other board members, that follow us on this, better. But this is, this slide really speaks to the goal of, 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 establish and maintain virtue at education and trust. That happens says, when you work in a cyclical relationship, as before, of the supercentivation recommendations you you take in action to the goal, to the, to the, to the, whatever the action is, that was decided upon within the, the right. Now, the board is going to be concerned with different types of questions, and it's important for the supercentive to be provided a level of attention for it. You're going to be concerned with one, five, and number one. And you're also going to be concerned at higher level, thinking about policies, goals, mission, and vision, in terms of what, what, what she's doing, and what it is. The supercentive is going to be able to, different types of questions, like a holiday. And it's kind of happening, where you're going to be, make your do it, actually, how to do it. And so, your question is, what do you want to work, uh, it's going to be a lot, to make it resolve, it's going to have the journey and means to get there. You're going to be concerned with objection sections, bringing certifications, and, and, and. But at a higher level, obviously, this is to, it was a school board, selecting the supercentive, setting policy, got the budget, acting as a board, or a board of, yes, and, and. The supercentive, the staff, correct the, the, the policy. The policy is good, it's, it's what I call a statement action, based on the policies that the board does. So, you can't, you can't have, they're, they're, you can't have the, what policy exceeds to a relationship, it's like a supercentive, it's a board. And the need that's, I mean, that's what I'm talking. And since policy, you do that, you sort of place, the group is going to have a standard. Whatever you want to, to keep it, to do. We're going to be doing our legislative policy. However, the major of the schools is functioning as a supercentive. You, the board, you can be responsible for applying the law, for, 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 for these policies and things. So this is, this is your policy, in terms of trying to establish what that means, between, between the board, and the, and the, 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 the. Let's move on to another important aspect, coming here, this most good. This, what, never was seen, uh, in this case, it's not. What are you, what are you working for, of course, being your, 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 your rules of the country, foundation, and I want to do this. The board, of course, uh, one of that, your policy, BKA, how to describe, people, what it's, very, very, that is. And I honestly think it's, it's important for this to be, of the people, leaving for the, the, the role of, 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 as a school board. Because what you have here, a series of right statements. And really, you, 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 you kind of, what your commitments are to each other, and what was, and, 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 and. But these, uh, these obviously were not the addition. They, they come up. And the policy, you know, identify, that was last year, July, and December, 2018. But it was the board before you, seventy one this morning, and it was the board before you, that actually, that these are, those, those, attention. So I love to avoid that, some of these, and, 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 I also didn't say that there are some boards, make a look at these. Your, the general name is, to be able to, um, just make sure, but then we have a board to treat in the summer, to be able to identify, how they've been in the past year, to be able to set goals, for where you want, like, things, you want, and this, for the policy. You're also making a look for the reference, in terms of, like, how are we going to, to make ourselves with each other, both learning, and, 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 outside of this. So, some of these that I forgot, would be one of the, I would all times say, the first, is based on decision to have your protection, their education, and the degree. But the key is another thing, important, you do the, 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 is I recognize my responsibility to have the operating skills, and to speak there while. So again, it seems to be your role as a support member versus the role of the superintendent commissioner. Letter G, listen to all students, and follow the current, all the places, the proper, and, 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 the sub-section, and I totally agree, and that, and they are, they are, they are. But that works is destiny, policy regarding the place, third, it also suggests policy, I'm looking at the hierarchy of where you know, service, and service, to look, look at, most of the possible, make, 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 preparation, for, 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 for. Letter B, she's another important, it's one for all. Also, board decision, you've got to determine, you want, you want to do this. Now, that, during, is, as a title, for that, they can turn, yet at the same time, there have to be people on the side of the vote, that had more votes, and you decide the people, and you decide the votes, that had fewer. But that was a, I think, a, maybe not something that's, like, how, how, how decisions are made, you know. are made, you know. We s- we support the idea that, uh, when you're, uh, agenda, that nobody should be seconded, and then you're going to have a discussion, so you know what you're discussing, you're already delivered. And as a board member, you want to be as a board dependent, the board has to be, uh, part of speech, uh, so that, uh, your voice says it heard under that, under the deliberation, and then the votes say it. So I think they want to first, silence during those deliberations and conversations in the vice center. So it's important for you both to hear, you think you have a different perspective, at least for these, I've heard, just to, wait on some of us, and I mean, uh, sometimes we do have to get involved. We have, we have a part, this, if silence implies the center, then you want to make sure that you're having the ability to discuss and participate in your supervision for the votes. That's important, because when you put letter B on your photo back, I was supporting a decision made by the majority of the board of the vice chair, which means that, okay, you understand why the vote is taken, right? But you understand why I was made in the head of our suite, which is this, that presentation, and the role of the majority of the board, when in that particular direction. And that's, that's where the board is all invested in this, this board, at that particular point in time. You're making a decision, you get the best information, you have, kind of, the best interest in seeing this. When you think about, as you're doing the deliberation, you can think of this. There's kind of a lot of this here on the backside as well, um, I think letter K is an important one, too. I refuse to make promises that follow a better than that, to start a kind of, or the board represent a whole. The importance of that, I mean, you can conduct on earth, the record, say, before you get here. You have that full deliberation, and you have a full conversation, and the meeting and deliberation comes to you early that deliberation, early that conversation, right? Ultimate decision. And so we think, or if you can be able to come to the table, that the rest of the mind is able to think about what your opinions and, and, uh, topics, the, the, the points of view, and how the people were asked, and, and, but. Um, letter O, is it, why won't you especially think about the impact? I remember all times, this week, the schools, and I put my energy to support when they go into the theater and state, you know, the rich child will be the best, you should pass. The votes are great, um, I've seen, or I sort of taken this, and they actually very much, they were actually back over there deciding, so, uh, the knowledge with, whether it's, uh, this is why, I'm sorry about that. These are the things, and these are the differences, um, to, to discover, to be able to conduct themselves. So that's, that's a, 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 a.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Can I make a recommendation, just because of the, we're thirty minutes in, we still got over half the slides, or, uh, numbers. Instead of reading our policies to us, which most, many of us has seen and pointed out, if you can go over your, why the policy is important, and how the policy in general impacts, and then, since you have our policies there, then we can read them again and be reinforced that way. It's kind of more on why we have these responsibilities. I don't know, it's awful hard to hear you because the acoustics in this gym, and I know that people online are probably even having a more difficult time.
Sure.
All right, that way we can get you out, we can get out, and we can still get the information that we really need.
What, um, what I'd like to do there is go up to our year policy D C A. My, my, this is why, towards the best way that we face this case, that's the thing about the, um, again, you can say this is four, but I recognize those talks, sort of operating tools, I can see that they're all, um, but if you go to your data, your, um, let me slide on, um, electronic again. And yes, your policy, uh, is important to know, important to know that, uh, Dan, you start being out, uh, to, some of you for the purposes of being on the, uh, in the board, your business needs to be, uh, even late at day, and you had to do, uh, uh, see the writers, and also do the three or whatever, so, uh, relying, Dan, you see, and obviously the, uh, the, 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 the,[1145.12] Our policy sentence in this provides that it's not only to you, but also for people of the kind of studies and questions in the class. They identify that you need to go back and you can call it the lowest possible level of something. A classroom or a school issue, if you actually go back, you will see a thing that uh. We saw the situation with the teaching or with the school personnel or maybe with the administration. Um, be able to take a look at one of those situations where you need a better vertical role. And then definitely get the whole topic to be talked about. Really try to encourage the engagement and coordination that that all solves. This is still a policy that kind of recommends that it's a part of the unique case in this area.
This is to state what our policy verbally policy is that we do. So we might have it incorporated somewhere else, or we may have this, but this is our normal procedure to reference people that talk to us.
It's great to be able to have everything that we're doing and we're more of a culture being to point out um. Um, the next policy, I mean, you have to be happy to keep that in the team. A lot of things that require a difference in how we are posting comments about the winter on the whole school board. So if that policy is engaged. Which is your position policy and it's pretty well set up um. The expectation you had, there's been more chair, there's almost a fourth insurance, whether they ever have uh public comments and. It's really important to do now because it's not extended meetings, such meetings. My interest is standing for all your full board meetings, uh board chats, special board meetings, uh there's so many to attend for public committee. I'm at that sort of level then of it, obviously, you can get a board meeting and call for. Exactly the session and then we'll have a public committee. Now, we did an area of the public participation policy right up there. I did provide a key concern within the night of opening that can be right at the safety spot that can be given or leading as well as just prior to um. Public comment section and there's also a public strip that could be utilized as long as you just fire to the public committee. If you got that, it's going to be helpful to me as to what that's going to be public comment. The very last policy that has been afforded that will uh would be one on my super evaluation. I think the standard policy in there is all for the team and the human dimension is that there are always sincere uh their own lack of evaluation. Maybe we can take a look at how it began over the past year, another goal is what we are looking for over the course of the next year. That's not valuation arising from our community, we're unable to look at each other and look at what we've done which we need to consider goals to work set for. Yeah, I guess I have a few questions. There was a debate we had on that we heard and talked about so far. Um, I got a case that um we can typically talk about this beginning of that um. Are any of you supposed to move, we've worked here, there's something we got a hundred or twenty days in order. Um, we talked about that as the way it sits up. Maybe it's one of our meetings. But yes, just make sure that you're nothing with the action of the board giving them all. Or to make sure that um you are. Not as nicely, like you're keeping a public service each other and not as soon. Such as we started doing. But we have any questions?
Any questions?
None on Zoom.
None from our people on Zoom. Anybody out in the audience have it? All right. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for these slides.
And we will wait a couple of minutes to let Mr. Bailey get himself all put together and. Our our educational technician back there, IT guy.
He's gonna have to turn the camera. Jordan, can you switch the? Thank you. Yes. I can't hear you. We'll have everyone do it and then we'll send it together.
I think we go on with approval of the minutes. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December eighth, twenty twenty one and December twenty ninth, twenty twenty one Board of Directors meeting. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Comments, corrections? Seeing nobody on Zoom. Okay, that being said, then we'll call for the vote.
Christie, yes. Dory, yes. Robbie, Diane, Jen, Joe, Bob.
Yes. All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comments. Again, a reminder to those who are either here or online. Uh, public comments is an opportunity to speak about things going on in our school system. Please keep it civil. We do not mention people's names. We it is not a time to make derogatory comments towards any staff or student. If you have those, then please contact our administrators independently to discuss it and if necessary, onto our superintendent. So at this time, if there's anybody that would like to uh address the board. And this is not a back and forth. This is your opportunity to make a statement and make a comment. So those on Zoom, if you can raise your hand, we'll turn, we'll invite you to turn on your mic. Those who are out there that it's not, it's not the time to talk, if we can keep your mic silenced so we don't get any feedback, it would be appreciated. So if you can raise your hand, we can call on you out on Zoom. If there's anybody here in the audience, please come forward to the mic.
There's no one on Zoom.
We have nobody indicating I'd like to make a comment tonight. I'd like to thank everybody who is in attendance and listening in. For attending and uh and seeing what's going on with your school board. At this time, petition communications, I'm not aware of any.
None.
Reports, superintendent's report.
So I have a few things um tonight. Well, first, we want to say that it's National School Board Recognition Month. Um, so we just, we have a little certificate and thanks to Jamie for some chocolates on uh the tables. But we just wanted to thank you for your dedication, your support and commitment to the RSU. So thank you very much. Um, this afternoon, uh, we did email the board about a couple of water issues at the high school. Um, we did have a sprinkler that uh did burst and we did, it did trigger the fire alarm. So students in the high school had to evacuate and follow the evacuation protocol and were able to be accounted and came back in and it was dismissal time. So then uh went right back out onto buses. Uh, about a couple hours later, we did have another water uh pipe burst in the kitchen. Um, it is all cleaned up and we are ready to go uh for tomorrow. Um, so just wanted to update you on the water. Um, the other thing I need to know is uh an SOP was embargoed yesterday, was released today. So we had an uh updated SOP for um how to handle with positive cases. It was updated on so on this, we had one that was updated on December twenty ninth and we had another one that was updated today. Um, there are some significant changes to how they would like us to uh deal with COVID. Um, there are some things that our team is going to make um some minor changes. Um, and then other ones, we are going to wait for the collaborative planning team to meet next week. Um, Andy will be sending out information to those members that were identified for that team. Uh, and it's mostly about um identifying close contacts and reporting um as well as isolation periods. Um, also want you to be aware that this Supreme Court is a ruling on the Bosch ruling on on the eighteenth, which is next week. Um, that is part of the Biden's vaccination uh requirement. Um, depending on um how that ruling goes, we are started a process to create a procedure uh for the RSU for to how to be in compliant. Um, with whatever the ruling will be. Um, there will be certain regulations that if it does pass, will have to be put into place uh by February seventeenth. And then uh we'll have to have full implementation of the ruling um by March nineteenth. Um, so we'll keep you updated after the Supreme Court rules of how that will look for the RSU. So those are the four things I have for you tonight.
All right, so you have some appointments and resignations?
Yes, um Sarah Bedard was an appointment at Tech Three at the middle school. Um, some resignations is Glenn Reynolds, Director of Operations, uh Brian Appelitano, Grade One Teacher at SPS. And Diane Whitmore, French Teacher at Oak Hill High School at the end of the school year. Uh, he's later on.
Oh. That's right. I'm seeing it now. All right. You have a report, Director, CAI?
I do not.
All right, and we have principals' reports, oral reports. Ben, gonna start us off. All right, Ben? Can you turn that mic on? I think it. It is? Okay. No, we're not hearing you.
You might have to hold it.
He had to hold it pretty close to.
Or you can.
Yeah, okay.
So uh. Probably. But it's not very cool that you had a sort of immediate work that's pretty exciting. You have to watch like that with all the students that are up going every time. Um, this is not really a bit of a complete decision, it's not a big mistake. It's always exciting to see people who's excited to be. You know, it's fun to be around and often that's just about the pattern of school. The middle school with policy that happens. Part of the year is um. This year, uh he is the teacher of our extended team, so we're right. As well as sheltered and. That was a truck and a lot of people since in our local waters. Those who are in our environment, fly fishing. But for a lot of the importance of diversification, our local businesses. The conversation of us uh in charge of the easy is why I'm.
None on Zoom, none on Zoom.
No. Thank you very much. Ralph, Freddie, Marco?
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, here's a chief. For also share some happenings that I see. The legal legislative assembly. Completely there are all the assets uh running the rights and school community. Once a high school initiative, the holiday access is thrown becomes school district initiative. Uh, with all schools and central offices. That's to contain food, clothing, helmets and police. This year's efforts for thirty families, actually four, and several of the nine kids. Uh, we get over two thousand dollars in local businesses and individual donation. Uh, and school likely very helpful to drive. Uh, coincide with the holiday access to the annual poetry rocket, which is partnership between both schools and. Partner. So we should regard that volunteers to breed the elements who is your point is that under trees having throughout the year. I assume so, local and high school, I do in honor of the show of X to those involved and a sincere thank you to all of those people just. During the holiday break, we were successful, the P C school, we were. From a community. Opportunity to work for content and various. Yeah, uh. Working preparation. So I won't work. My name is, I just mentioned to you. Right. So the activity happening. We're closing. These days, who are considered. All of us.
Questions? You online? Thank you very much. Jamie?
What are you getting? Um, lots of months that happened during the holidays, there's been a series of events and persons and other holidays um. In the past, we did a two day session. Here's, I think it's quite interesting, there's a lot of fun, even the two little groups at the end of the year. We still pull them together the week before and after we've been presented with the end. Um, coming back from the holidays, students and several that have been to schools, the schools better well. Um, love our best of the few reviews. Um, teachers closely wants to. We're working a lot in the L S C right now, um, maybe improved regularly, maybe professional development, different activities with students. There'll be a lot of information shared of things in the near future as we approach the number of the cards. Which is solely literally based that we're very excited about. And we're testing with the present done. Three four was supposed to be having a national assessment of the digital progress with eight tests administered to some of our students. On January twenty seven, there was even an email from the lady representative to the staff and short visits that will not take place. It is supposed to be reserved, but we will be. Yeah, I'm super excited to be getting an assistant principal candidate to be on the on the agenda. Um, it's a great experience with all.
Any questions? But before you leave, I'd like Mr. Wilson and Mr. Alberti to notice that the mic is set up, uh, set up just perfectly for her. She didn't have to hold it.
She set it up.
It all, it all, it all depends on which building we're in. Thank you very much. Uh, we don't have any other reports. Uh, we have no old business listed on the agenda. So seven point one, new business. To elect Dustin Miles as the Assistant Principal at the Libby Tozier and Carrie Ricker Schools. As recommended by the super in school, Superintendent of Schools for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Moved and seconded. Discussion. So. Typically, our superintendent gives us some words. Would you like to address this and uh let us know why you uh like the position?
So screwed up.
Uh, look, the mic might be the right height. Discussion.
Right, and a top teacher as well as a faculty for the last four years. Really excited to work at such a great community and I brought in some of the staff and um just a really nice.
All right, so did our personnel committee send an interview? All right. Okay, we take a lot of trust and a lot of committees recommend and obviously. Recommended to come forward, you wouldn't be here. Is there any other questions? Miles?
None on Zoom?
Well, in that case, we'll call for the vote.
Christie, yes. Dory? Yes, thank you. Robbie, Diane, Jen, Joe, Bob.
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome.
All right, welcome. Seven point two, entertain a motion to elect Darren Collins as a math teacher at the Oak Hill Middle School as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. For the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I don't see another unfamiliar face. Mr. Collins must not be with us tonight. Mr. Wilson? All right, thank you. There's no other questions, then I'll call for the vote.
Christie, yes. Dory, yes. Robbie, Jen, Joe, Bob.
Yes.
Diane, I I have an old sheet for this one. Diane, motion passes.
Seven point three, entertain a motion to approve continuing contract for the following teachers, a list was attached in our agendas. Uh, those of us who've done them electronically. I heard that. Vote in a second. Any comment, questions?
None on Zoom.
No, so I think Christie, your question got, that you had about somebody on the list have was answered.
Yeah, so packet was updated with the two names removed. And sent back out. So those of you who had the digital copy, you have the accurate list.
The comment? And then I'll call for the vote.
Christie, yes. Dory, yes. Robbie, Diane, Jen, Joe, Bob.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Committee reports, finance facility committee. Personnel Policy Committee? All right, CAI and Technology Committee?
We didn't. And it was looking over the. For the upcoming school year, first of studies for high school and there were. Really was. Classes. People so. Down has shifted, so maybe we're. Been teaching. Our work was done last year, we just called the preparation department for the meeting. Um, and maybe you could think that we not necessarily.
Good evening. In recent months, members of my administration and. With the president, have been charged with involvement in. The Watergate affair. The. Committee during and preceding the nineteen seventy two. And charges that responsible officials.
All right, we enjoy the people's humor out there, wasting our time in theirs. So if there's no other comments, then uh we'll move on. That was the report. Board member comments? Any board member comments?
Sam, that everybody on the board.
Yeah, please look through the package because there's important information there for each of us on the board, even. I mean, myself, every time I go to this, I've been to this training a few times. Something new comes up every time, something interesting, the laws change. Uh, and they change our responsibilities and duties from time to time. So it's important to stay, stay up to speed. All right. So. Ten point one, before. Before we uh make the motion here. I did not get printed out because my ribbon, my ink cartridge went dry on me after about page three or four. To bring a printed copy here with you and I have it on my PC. The draft and then I'll send it to the school board when the final and have it. But I don't know if there is. I mean, we can still discuss kind of in general, the comments that I got and the evaluation, or we would need to put this off till. Next meeting when I can bring a copy to the seat. I'm not going to send out electronically just because of the confidentiality of it. Especially the draft. All right, so I would just kind of like to get a consensus on whether or not you believe the executive session would be appropriate tonight. If can we, I don't want to go into it if we can't come up with a final evaluation I give the superintendent. So. Christine needs to know whether or not we should add this executive session. Robbie?
Yeah, I I don't think it's any problem waiting till the next week.
We're already passing December or September, September, October. All right, if there's nobody that has a different opinion and wants to do this tonight, then I will pass over ten point one. Or I guess the appropriate way because then there's an adjustment is entertain a motion. If a motion's not made, we'll just pass over it. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to enter to an executive session person to one M R S A four oh five six eight. Evaluation of the superintendent. Is there a motion? There ain't no motion, then it will fail. We'll go on to adjournment. Thank everybody for coming tonight, for listening. Uh, I hope you all stay safe, stay warm and enjoy. Every bit of life that you can. So without further objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned.